Welcome to July, today's July regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Now I've said all over you, maybe I'll say it better. Welcome to the July 10th, 2024 regular meeting of the Scarborough zoning board of appeals. The meeting will now come to order. That probably already happened. This is a public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, the public has the right to hear everything that is being said and to view all the exhibits that are presented. Please notify the chairperson if you are unable to hear or see the proceedings. The board works from a prepared agenda and will take up tonight's items as listed. We only have one major, or one item other than the approval of our minutes, which is appeal number 2762, special exception appeal. We'll get to that in a moment. The, this is a public finding and I ask everyone to remember that our job as a zoning board of appeals is to make findings of fact and determinations of law. We're not here to make policy or to determine what we think these town council or other bodies might wish to have happen. We are a quasi judicial body that strictly exists to find, to make findings of fact based on the information presented to us. We can bring in our own personal knowledge, but only insofar as it relates directly to the matter brought forth. And we can bring in other matters as brought forward by the members of the public. We can't bring anything else to this. Once we do this, we will close the record and we will adopt those findings of fact for each criterion of the appeal. Each type of appeal has a different one, we'll go through a special exception tonight. And then we will vote to determine whether the findings of fact justify or justify the appeal or require us to deny the appeal. On that basis, we'll get started with tonight's order of business. First thing is the pledge of allegiance. If you could all stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then Doreen, if you would be so kind to call the roll.
David Bork.
Here.
Richard Silkman.
Here.
Peter Freylinger.
Here.
Kyle Lunin.
Here.
And Joe Doherty.
Here.
And we have two absenteeists tonight. So we have Christina's not here and Michelle is not here. Therefore, we are elevating Joe to a voting member, right? And Kyle, both, right? So we have, yep. We have a quorum, I just want to make sure we do that because I always forget to do the elevation thing when we have that. So we have our two alternates elevated to voting members for this evening. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the June 12th meeting. Dom, have we had a chance to review?
I move we accept them.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Kyle. Not everyone was here, David, I know you weren't.
While I wasn't here, I did have a chance to review the notes and I can't vote.
Got it, terrific. Then if I could have a vote to approve the motion, just a show of hands is fine. In favor? That's unanimous, the minutes are approved. We then move into tonight's main business, which is the appeal number 2762, a special exception appeal by Mark Peterson. Mark, if you could stand up at the podium, make sure the microphone is on, which I failed to do.
Check, one, two.
Thank you very much. And if you could go through and, yes?
Mr. Chair, I would like to bring up a point here that before we could hear an appeal, we need to make sure the applicant has standing.
Ah, okay.
Okay. And if I look at the lease that the applicant has for the premises, in section 2.1, it says that the tenant shall occupy and use the premises solely as a private residence and for no other purposes, including without limitation, any commercial or business activities. Therefore, the applicant doesn't have standing.
Right.
He's bound by a legal contract not to do this.
That's a fair point, Mr. Bork. Thank you for raising that. Mark, have you addressed that clause of your lease with your, the owner of the property?
The owner of the property is here with me.
Gotcha, okay. So has a, has an addendum or has a rider to the lease been drafted and signed?
We have not drafted a rider to the lease yet. His lease is up the other month and I can certainly draft an addendum for that.
Got it.
I would further add that the applicant has been conducting this business for the past year and a half at this property and has not been doing so in, you know, in, by, in compliance with the lease. And that should have been, you know, something that the tenant should have notified the landlord, you know, that's further in the lease, that any changes. And there have been changes made to the property, including putting a hole in the garage door, you know, for the exhaust of this.
Temporary, sir, go ahead. We actually, he's been fully aware of all activities in the property.
We don't see anything in writing here that's been given to us to show that there is an agreement.
Yeah, and actually, to maybe make the point for Mr. Bork on this one, again, we make findings of fact based on what's presented to us. And so without written agreements between yourself and the owner, we're kind of at a bind. We would need to see evidence that, that there is a legal, a legally binding agreement that the owner has given you permission to do this to date. And we have another issue to deal with on that, which I'll get to in a moment. But we would certainly need some sort of a, of a written evidence that shows that the owner has, is amending the terms of the, has amended or is interested in amending the terms of the lease so as to allow the activity.
Sure, I wanted to point out that I've tried every possible attempt to be open and communicative. The process of doing the coffee roasting is very new in the state. And I had my, the process inspected by the Chad for the home processor license. And that process is not easy to do. And so the focus for me was to follow whatever rules were available. And as soon as I knew that there was any question about my ability to do this within the town of Scarborough, I immediately went and filled out and tried to do the right forms. I've tried to, so there's certainly, David, from, I understand and I appreciate your point. Just want to make sure, if there's an opportunity, if I could probably come back, would that be a better approach and have whatever? Because I filled out the forms based upon the questionnaires and tried to provide as much information as I could and happy to provide whatever additional information is necessary to so you feel comfortable with processing. This seems like.
Let me just pause there because I.
Yeah, I just, so we haven't heard yet from the landlord, but I think.
So prior to him even.
Hold on, because you're gonna have to do it.
Yeah, let me hear it count.
Yeah, so, so if the landlord testifies that he's going to execute an amended lease or a new lease that expressly allows this activity, then I think we can make findings of fact tonight, based on the record we have, conditional on, or maybe they don't even need to be conditional as I'm thinking about this. I think if we just say, we can make a finding based on the oral representation that they're going to execute a written, a written lease.
Yeah.
And if we don't feel comfortable with that, then we could just perhaps put a condition that next month or at some point we get a writing that would allow us to.
I agree with that, Kyle. If, if the owner had not been here, then we would have, we'd be in a different pickle.
Yeah.
But the fact the owner is here is prepared to, it sounds like, prepared to make attestations to the effect that Kyle is describing. I'm inclined to agree with that. We may have other issues as we go through the appeal because of the activity already having taken place. So there are other issues that may come up. But I'm inclined to agree, David, that with the owner here preparing, seemingly prepared to make attestations, that, that he has acquiesced and, he has positively acquiesced to the activities to date and he is prepared to enter into a written agreement to update the lease to enable the activities. We could use that in our findings of fact.
Just in response to what you just said and what Kyle said, I agree. You know, this makes sense to go forward as long as we have assurances that some specific date in the future, we will have a copy of the amended lease. Okay? Now, in addition to that, I've got to make a disclosure, okay? Mark is a member of Fork Food Lab. I'm an advisor and consultant to Fork Food Lab. That doesn't affect the way I'm going to work on this or, or view your appeal. So, you know, I just want to make that assurance upfront to the board, okay? That I think I can vote fairly on this appeal.
Got it. I have a question for our CEO.
Go ahead.
Does this make the owner of the property also a party to the appeal? Or is the occupant as the sole member of the appeal okay?
No, I think that the issue of the lease, it's one, one item in the lease. He's a tenant in good standing at that address. I think clearing that up doesn't really make him a party to the appeal.
Okay.
He's just offering testimony to address one concern.
Yeah, just wanted to.
The other concern that you raised, Mr. Bork raised, it is, it's a valid one, but it's also not unprecedented. We've had at least two or three appeals come before us who operated for a year or more, some for several years, before they ever knew that they had to actually get a special exception home occupation. So I don't think you can penalize them for doing the right thing just because they were able to operate prior to that.
I don't mean to imply that there's a penalty that.
I just wanted to bring that up and clear that out because it seemed like we were headed down a slippery slope there that I didn't really want to go.
It just will come up in the narrative that we will have to make note of. So, okay, sorry for that, for that. But, okay, thank you, Mr. Bork, for, for raising that. Thank you, Kyle, for assisting in the discussion. We'll give the podium back to the, to the appellant.
Okay, thank you.
Before we do, I mean, I think it really is important to get the landlord on record.
Sure.
Stating what the conditions in the lease will be that we are going to approve. And he's standing, we're sitting right there, we can get him on the record because otherwise we don't have, we can't vote yes to that question.
No, I agree, but I don't think right now is the time for that. I think we will go through our typical procedure, which is to get a general overview of the application, a general overview of the, of the situation that we're looking to find fact on. There will be definitely a time when we will need the landlord to make that assertion. I just would like to give the, the appellant a chance to give an overview or.
But unless we have that assertion, we're not going to hear, we're not going to hear it. He fails the first test. He doesn't have right, he doesn't have right title and interest in the property.
But that is a question which is actually not number one on the list of questions.
But, but you don't get to come here unless you have right title and interest in the property. I can't come in and say, I want a zoning exemption for a piece of property that I don't own. You would say, get, get out, you don't have standing, which is what David's point is. And all it would take is for the landlord to step up and say, this is what I, this is how we will change the lease, we will accept this particular occupational activity, and then we can move forward.
I'm not sure that I would feel comfortable hearing him say that without knowing why we're here in the first place. So I would like to hear the summary from the, from the appellant of why we're here. And then I think we will open it up, as we always do, to members of the board to ask questions, but I want to hear the summary first.
I want to, what I want to know is whether he has the right to be here.
You'll hear it.
But, but I don't, he, right now, he does not have the right to stand up in front of us because he does not have right title and interest in the property.
As a point of order, I'd like to run the meeting in an effective way. And I don't find that, getting that answer at the, prior to hearing a summary, it provides us with any value. I will move quickly to get that for you, understanding the need that you have for that. But I want to hear a summary first.
Do other members of the committee feel the same way? Or are you more inclined to want to hear from the landlord first?
I'm, I'm with you, Richard, I would like to hear from the landlord. I know that is taking it out of order, the usual order, but I do, I would like to hear it just so that we can make sure we're, we're ready to proceed.
My problem with that is I don't have anything on which to make a determination that whatever he says brings us to, brings us to something that we can evaluate.
Well, I think, I mean, when we hear, at the close of the public hearing, we can then weigh the, the sum of the, the evidence. So I don't, I'm not super concerned about hearing it out of order, I guess.
Got it. I'd like to preserve the order that we normally have, if that's okay.
Joe, how do you feel?
I, a lot of good points, it's sort of a chicken and the egg thing, right? A bit. I, I think in the performance standard G, we'll get to this topic and it will be addressed with respect to, you know, do we need to do that on the front end? I, I mean, I think our, our job here is finding a fact on all of the performance standards. We will come to a point with standard G where we will have a finding of fact, right? And at that point in time, we will have heard from both of these gentlemen and I think have all of the testimony that we need to make that determination.
That's my view as well. This isn't a thing where I'm going to actually look for a consensus or a view from the board as a whole. We're going to move forward as, as I see fit.
I'd like to offer my opinion.
Of course.
The landlord would certainly be free to make a comment during, during public comments.
Correct.
So that would be in order.
That would be the correct listing of order, I agree. So with that, I'm going to bring it back to the appellant to ask to go through a summary of your appeal and then we will go from there.
Okay, so my name is Mark Peterson and we're talking about Black Point Coffee and we're located at 238 Black Point Road. And as David mentioned before, I'm working through a commissary kitchen called Fork Food Lab. And the, the food lab takes care of the general services, but they do not have any roasting capability. The roasting I do is very small. I'm just doing a couple of pounds a week. The roasting process doesn't take very long and it's very quiet. I am working through, I sell my coffee at some of the farm stands. Last year, I was at Saco Bedford. You have a, already have a coffee service here at, at the Scarborough Farmers Market. I do several nonprofit support, most recently, South Portland has a port authority that they opened a new building right behind the Hannaford and they asked for coffee service for that. There is also the South Portland Food Bank and I've donated bags to them as well as working on the Cars for Coffee event, which is coming up this weekend. So I am here to request an appeal for recognition, as I said before, of better understanding and following due process to be in respectful respect of the appropriate requirements to do their services. And I also recognize that this is a residential neighborhood of which you will find the testimony from my landlord of my respect to the property, my respect to the community. I'm a volunteer at the Piping Plover Group. I'm also a bird ambassador with them, so I do that on Sundays and Tuesdays. I also teach at the adult ed here, coffee classes. One is in tasting coffee, the other is making coffee. So I, I'm trying to do my best in the community and put the right approach together so that I'm just working for you. Is there anything else that you'd like me to add to my introductory remarks?
Not at this point, unless you, I think that's a great summary.
Thank you.
But no, that's not necessary.
May I make a comment here? The, the new Fork Food Lab facility is all electric and it cannot accommodate any kind of gas power, whether it be natural or propane type of cooking. So that's, that's why he has to, would have to roast beans elsewhere.
Appreciate that. As we normally would do through the order, we now would make the determination of whether we would have jurisdiction over this.
We would now make a determination whether we have jurisdiction over this. And Mr. Bork and, and, and Richard have both, or Mr. Bork has raised a point and Richard, I think, has, has made it well-known that we should consider the fact that there is a rental issue here and that there, we may need some additional representations prior to making a determination that we have full jurisdiction. So now would be, I think, the appropriate time to understand, you're renting from, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Matt Garrett.
Matt Garrett, you're renting from Matt Garrett. We don't have any evidence in the, in the correspondence provided that there is an adoption of a change in the lease. So, Mr. Garrett, could you comment on, yeah, exactly, like you head up there, comment on any other arrangements that you have made or intend to make with the applicant to, to give us, understand that we have jurisdiction?
Certainly. So prior to Mark even starting this endeavor, he came to me and said, hey, I've been roasting my own coffee beans and I'd kind of like to take this to the next level. Is this, is this something that you'd consider allowing me to do? And my answer was yes, but according to the zoning ordinance in R2, you can't run a commercial enterprise out of your house, period. No signs, I don't want parking lots, I don't want people in and out of here, I don't want retail sales, I don't, none of that. And the other condition that, that Mr. Bork brought up was modification of the building. Absolutely no modifications to the structure. And so we came up with an idea of building a temporary wall where he has to be enclosed to comply with the state's regulations on, on coffee roasting and food production, that this can still be enclosed and not have a modification to vent through the side of the building or otherwise. And I said, as long as you comply with these conditions, what would otherwise be a home occupation and not a commercial enterprise, per the zoning ordinance, the ordinance of the town of Scarborough, I don't have a problem with it. Now, in the lease, I sort of read that condition along the same lines of what the zoning ordinance is. It's not a commercial enterprise. At that time, a year and a half ago, there were a lot of people that are still working from home in different capacities regardless of what their job was and working remotely. So I don't have an issue at all amending the lease to allow coffee roasting and allow him to conduct his, his home business. I'm not sure what the verbiage would be.
Right.
But, which I'll have to have sorted out by probably legal counsel or whoever would, would draft that amendment to the lease. But I, I have no problem amending the lease to condition Mark to continue his, his operation there.
And if I can summarize that, it sounds like you have had the verbal conversations and given verbal approval and, and direction to Mr. Peterson in line with everything you just said.
That's correct, that's correct. Before he was even certified with the state, he came to me first and said, this is what I would like to do. And I gave him conditions on what I wanted out of it and what I didn't want him to do. And I've, he's been upfront with me the whole time and I've been abreast of the entire process. And he has respectfully complied with everything I've requested out of him.
Is there any other questions from the, from the board or are there any concerns with how that's taking place among the, his owner? Okay, okay. You'll probably, as we go through this, and you will obviously have the written minutes and everything, there will probably be a, a request for a written amendment to the lease to, to embrace those comments. But we appreciate that that verbal conversation and agreement has already taken place and will, we will consider that as part of the, the facts that we'll consider.
So if I can add one other thing, his current lease is up at the end of the month.
Okay.
And we've already signed another lease for him to renew next year, which doesn't take effect until July 31st, August, July 31st. So it wouldn't be an issue to amend his lease for the new one. Right now, it wouldn't be coming into the middle of a, of a lease period or anything like that. It would start over when his new lease does in three weeks.
So start taking notes, okay? Great, I appreciate that very much, Mr. Garrett, thank you. Okay. At this point, we would, we will go through the standards for special exemptions as you filled out the, the form obviously for us. If you could take the podium again, we'll go through these one by one and just understand your, your statements of fact for each one. So the first criteria, A, the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reasons of sewage disposal, emissions of the air, water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Yep, so the, the way this roaster is designed, it traps all of the chaff that is created when you take the beans and roast them and comes in, comes in a little container, does a little vortex container, so that container can actually be emptied. Those are actually used by many gardeners for mulch. So it's actually about a return and returned sustainable. And there's very little, it's like a little oven in there. The round circle part, metal part that you see there is the drum. And so you can see, it's quite small from the drum size. And it's, I, that five, just to give you some, that five gallon propane tank has, I haven't refilled it in weeks, last weeks, several months, just in that. So it's super efficient because you're, you're not going more than 400 degrees. You can, it'll run hotter if you had to, but 400 degrees is typically where you're starting, then you're actually making it cooler. So the, the fan is built on the top of that where that piping is going out. And that's less noise or ventilation than you have for typical dryer vent or a shower vent or something like that.
Question I have, and others might, the, the emissions to air in particular, how much? And I'll admit, I think of a coffee roastery probably on an industrial scale and they're kind of stinky. and they're kind of stinky. But I, I'm not familiar with this, so could you describe at least a, a bit of the emissions? Is there a scent or is there an odor or anything that's produced by this?
Yeah, there is a slight odor that does come out and it, it's pleasing odor. It's not, not really a foul odor. And it's, you would have to really be in very close proximity. And if you look at the front, where the, the front picture of the garage where that is, there isn't anyone in that area that would be, you'd probably be able to smell that because it just doesn't have that much of a, doesn't produce smoke. There's a, there's a small amount of, of smoke, I would say, at the peak of when it reaches the, the first crack of the roast, but it's, it's very minor.
And that the vent is facing toward the street, not toward the side of the garage?
That's correct. Those, so what we did is, this was what Matt and I worked out and got approved by chat, was these two plywood panels that slide underneath the door. See, the door raises up and then the panels go and come, so it's all painted, as you can tell, to match and look as if it would normally be as discreet as possible.
Yes, Bork?
Since this is an open flame cooking process.
Closed.
It is closed, okay. So.
It's in a drum, insulated.
I understand that, all right. So I just want to make sure that I phrased this right, but are there any other items being stored inside this garage that could be flammable in case of an accidental incident?
Are there any other items? Well, you can see there, there are other things in there that are in the garage. So there is a safety mechanism, an auto shut off with the device itself, so if it goes over temperature, it'll automatically shut off.
Okay.
There is two fire extinguishers and within walking proximity.
That's what I was getting to. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to number, our item B then. The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity. I believe the landlord has already spoken to that in terms of stipulations he's asked for, but if you could just comment.
It doesn't, it's not required for the operations and for what I'm doing and I don't, I don't attract it. I don't have any desire to have, put traffic or people on the property and I'm a single owner and single operator.
Item C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require a substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
It operates efficiently and it's using a standard propane tank with the standard fittings, nothing unusual there that would create undue risk, I believe, in the neighborhood.
Any questions? And David will ask you, you seem to know a little bit more about this.
Okay. Later on in the standards of performance, you say that you do make this, this available for customers to pick up so they don't have to pay the shipping fees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, you know, in this particular one, you know, safety, won't create public safety problems, okay? We'll get to the safety, the performance standards later, okay? But that's, that also has bearings right here in terms of vehicular traffic. So, you know, just, if you could just give us a quick understanding of how that works here with customers picking up.
Yeah, sure. Customer may order online and say, hey, I'd like a bag of coffee and I'd like to come pick it up. And they would, they would notify me that that's what they're going to do. And then I would notify them when their bag of coffee is ready to go, ready to be picked up. And then I would have that available for them so when they came to the door, I could give them the coffee.
All right, so they're scheduled pickups?
Yeah, it's scheduled.
Good, okay.
I mean, it's within a, not like exact time.
So if there's only one vehicle coming into that driveway at a time for customer pickups, then?
Yes, if there was some sort of situation where I had.
Now, Black Point Road is, at times of the year, it has heavy vehicular traffic. Is there any problem with backing out or is there a way for a vehicle to turn around so that it can drive out?
Yes, you could turn around at the end of the driveway. Just to give you a sense of scale, I have one pickup in a month.
Oh, thank you.
Not that kind of.
All right, that covers it.
I can't tell you what next month's going to be, but that's.
All right.
Very few pickups.
All right, well, while we're on that subject then, do you use Fork Food Lab for customer pickups?
No, I don't.
You don't? Okay, all right.
I think as, the Fork Food Lab is relatively new and as, as the services are available through them, I'll absolutely use them whenever possible.
Talk to Corinne.
Doctor Corinne, yes, thank you.
And I apologize for not looking this up. Two forty-two Black Point Road is roughly where on Black Point?
Two thirty-eight.
Two thirty-eight, sorry.
About halfway down between, it's two roads past the cemetery.
Got it.
It's between Marsh Rock Circle and Clearwater Drive.
Two roads further out towards Black Point.
Towards the Libby Road.
Yep, got it.
Libby River.
Two roads, so just to, you know, the microphone, two roads past the cemetery. Going towards the beaches, it's on the left-hand side.
So it's not by a tie-up by Highland Ave or anything like that where there's?
No, and it's a straight section of road there, yeah, easy to see.
Any other questions on item C? Otherwise, item D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies?
Yeah, it's, it doesn't affect, yeah.
Question on that. Are you required by your Department of Ag license to have a three compartment sink for ware washing and also a hand washing sink?
Yes, that I have already. That's in what's called a cart and it has the, it doesn't, doesn't require three, it requires one sink. I don't need to do the triple sink for this application.
Okay, so, yeah, the standards are a little different for a home.
Yes.
Manufacturing.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And I have, I've gotten, I have the double sink in the kitchen if I needed it and I have been reviewed and approved for that for home processing. And then I also, with the Fork Food Lab and the South Portland Health Inspector has inspected my process for preparing.
Yeah, that's a different license, that's a food service license.
So I got it twice.
Yeah. So are you, and this is really a side issue, but are you also running a business, where you're actually serving brewed coffee anywhere?
Sure, yes.
All right, so I just wanted to get that out and that's not being done from your home?
No.
Okay, that's just strictly, you have a cart or a food truck or something?
I have a, I have a rolling small cart that gets assembled.
Great, okay.
Bring that.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Nothing else, we'll move on. Item E, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
Okay, and you've seen the pictures here, the garage door raises up, we put panel, I put panels in place. I have an exhaust pipe that pokes through those panels. It's discreet and respectful and temporary.
And it's been done with consultation with?
With consultation with the landlord.
Correct, got it. If located in a shoreline zone, we'll take this as not applicable?
I can, I can confirm he's not in a shoreline zone.
I thought so. Item G, the applicant has sufficient right title or interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use. We've already heard a stipulation from landlord, which we appreciate on that. Are there any other comments or questions that we have on this one? I think we've covered this one in some detail. So we'll move that. The applicant has a technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals. We've already set a couple of, of, of expectations on the part of the lease arrangement, but if you could speak to any of the other technical and financial ability, that would be good.
Well, yes, first of all, it's, it's an interesting question, right? Because it's like saying, are you going to do whatever it takes to make it right? And I assume it's reasonable, yes, then of course I'd make it right. And I, I have, I'm, have the financial, I'm not sure if you need me to disclose my, my finances or not, but I, I have the means and I think you've seen the demonstration of the setup there, that it's not an elaborate setup that would require substantial amount of modifications if you so desired.
Are there any questions on that one? Okay, I think that's, that's right. And then finally, the proposed use is compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generational noise and operation.
Yeah, and I, you can even ask the neighbor, my neighbor is directly behind the house so he'd be able to testify to that or anyone else that is quite quiet and respectful of the neighborhood.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What if you become successful? What if somebody, you get an opportunity to double or triple the amount of coffee?
That's a great question.
Are you going to put in three machines? Are you going to operate more hours?
Sure.
Or are you going to, so, so what is it that you're really asking for here? Because it says here that you're going to operate two to three hours a week.
Yeah.
But that's not what you really want to do ultimately, right? I mean, you really want to operate a lot more hours so that you can make more money and?
Well, actually, that's a great question, Richard, so let's just talk about that because I've, I've been working through my business plan. The, the process of roasting coffee itself is not that lucrative a business. It, it takes a volume of coffee and you're going to sell by bags and you have to maintain inventory at that, at a fair much scale. There's more value in doing the catering services because you actually take a lot less coffee. The profit in the beverageing, actually you pay more, they pay more for the milk than they do the coffee. So my goal is always be to under, not to overextend my capabilities as, as a business person. Many companies we see, I mean, you hear in the news, coffee shops opening up and closing on a regular basis and being way over their investments. So my goal is to be as conservative and as small as possible. And that's why I, I just got a simple roaster. That roaster is the same size and dimensions as a much larger roaster, but it doesn't, so I could scale by going to another business. If a company like Fork Food Lab ever goes into consumer, a commercial business, I could go that way. I also have, there are other coffee businesses that do consignment, so I could get completely out of the roasting process, get my beans that way and not even have to roast. So there's a couple of different ways to pivot, but I don't plan to make anything larger in my, my space because I don't, I don't, I don't want to spend the time and I don't have the hours to spend time on volume. Plus, I think you, you've got to look at, you know, what, well, what I'm looking at is I providing also more opportunities for the community. The artwork that you're seeing on my coffee bags is made by local female artists. At the, at the Congress Craft and Fair, local artists are showing their work with my coffee. I run a Portland Coffee Hunters group with over five hundred members, no charge for them, and we go to coffee shops and we visit coffee shops. My goal here is to be a positive member in the coffee community, bringing and connecting people together. So maybe that's because I also am a technology consultant, part-time, so I do that and I have some revenue there. I'm not solely dependent upon this as my revenue and I don't think it's appropriate to use a residential space for anything beyond the scale I have.
So if we were to approve the exception, if we were to condition it on operating two to three hours a week, that would be acceptable to you?
I would like to have some room to scale up and scale down.
What would you like, and what would you, what would you like to have is, I'm concerned that, you know, that when we offer, when we give you the exception, the exception allows you to do your activity. We don't say you can only do it on Tuesdays or Wednesdays. So what is it that you would need for us to provide you? Is it ten, up to ten hours a week? We're amenable to that, I just wanted to know what you're, what you're looking for.
Well, I guess that my maximum desired level would be, would be two, six-hour days, so twelve hours a week would be.
Okay.
If that's okay with you. I haven't, I haven't had to do that, but I think that would allow me room.
Yeah, let me add to this conversation because there, there may be opportunities that Fork Food Lab would be able to scale there. I had a conversation with Corinne this morning about this, just because I knew this was coming and, yeah, and there are a lot of different ways he can tackle this without expanding, you know, this business too much at home. So, and you pointed them out, you know, what they are, so, you know, I'm, I'm sure that we can help you there at Fork Food Lab.
Can I ask a question of our code enforcement officer? If a condition, like a number of hours per week, is that something that you have the, the ability to enforce or is this the kind of thing that's typically left to the neighbors to enforce when they see an issue?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. I'm always concerned about whether it's town council or whether it's the planning board or whether it's the zoning board or any other group putting conditions on things that are not enforceable. How do I know how many hours a week he's operating? To your point, the neighbors start to complain, hey, all I can smell is roasting coffee beans day and night. There's fourteen cars in the dooryard all the time lined up the road. Then we know something's happened, but, you know, it, it, I, I would caution against, I, I've always cautioned against putting too many constraints around it. If you want, if you want to place conditions, buffering or something like that, that's solid, that doesn't require, you know, my knowing how many hours he's operating or what time of day or how many days a week, I can't, there's no way to enforce that. It makes you feel good as a board because I can see the direction you're going. You want to clamp this down, but I can't enforce it. So let's get real about what we can actually expect and, and what we can actually control or, or, you know, see. That, that would be much more helpful, I think. And, you know, I think i- if, if you've looked at the, the equipment and the setup and, and the distance he is from any abutting neighbors, then there should be a reasonable comfort level that if he ran that thing six hours a day, nobody's going to hear it, nobody's going to know it's really there, any more than somebody smoking a big piece of pork. You know, because there's a lot of smoke and there's a lot of odor that's created there. It's pretty good odor in most cases, but I mean, I think you have to, you have to get to a point where you guys are satisfied that there's enough built-in constraints or you can, you can as a condition, you know, place a fence or, or, you know, in this case, he doesn't own the property, so he would have to, in that regard, I guess the owner would be a party to the appeal, but if you had a condition that you wanted to impose that would, would, you know, address a concern, that would be better than trying to limit the number of hours or the days of the week, which is very hard to, to do.
I appreciate that, but what we're granting him is a permit to roast coffee in his home. I mean, that's, that's ultimately what we're going to be granting him is the, is the right to do that. Now, presumably if there's a problem with odor, then the enforcement comes in not in terms of the permit that we've issued him, it comes in the fact that he's violating some other provision of Scarborough's zoning ordinances or, or law. He's, he's a nuisance at, at that point and the police have the right to stop nuisance activities. If, on the other hand, if twelve cars park in his driveway, there's no ordinance against twelve cars parking in his driveway and he can do that, once we grant him the permit. So, you know, by, the only methodology that we have, I believe, is to either feel comfortable that this is all he's going to do, excuse me, to do, or to impose some condition. See, my concern about this operation as opposed to some of the other ones we've done, you know, with respect to things like baking bread or.
Someone comes on, yeah.
Or selling lobsters or doing those things is that there are natural limits on that based on the, the size of the, the process that you go through. But in this one.
I would disagree.
Well, in, in this one, I just feel like, I mean, we, we do know that there is a significant odor problem that arises with coffee roasters at industrial scale. We know that there's no problem with his roaster. Now, in between there, there's a gradient and I think we probably ought to say something about what we expect to be the operations of this facility.
Can I ask another question, Brian? Butters are notified for this type of appeal, correct? And, and none of them bothered to weigh in?
I've got no written cause.
I got the card because I live next door.
Oh. You're also, you're also in a butter. Okay.
I live directly behind two thirty-eight Black Point.
Okay.
I think there's your insurance.
Yeah. And I was going to bring that up after we kind of summarized on this. To Richard's point though, it is a good question. You said, I think, two to three pounds of coffee that you're roasting at any given time. How much, if you, if this grew in line with your business plans, which are by design modest and small, what would be the maximum number of pounds you'd roast a week? what would be the maximum number of pounds you'd roast a week?
Let's see, I, I can't sell that much. I don't have enough venues to be able to sell more coffee than I'm making now. So I would have on hand, just to make sure I had enough choices of, it's, I'm thinking, because their bags are eight ounces. They're not a pound. And some of them are 12 ounces. They're quite small. That's the thing about doing specialty craft roasting. I probably have, would have about eight pounds total on hand of roasted coffee, right? And it has a freshness life. So there's a certain point where, you know, you have, after a month, probably, you're going to have a problem. The, the roaster also has a capacity, right? You're, you're limited by, you know, how much, you know, the chaff container holds for being able to, so you've got to stop anyways, right, and clean things out. So it, it isn't something that you could do at, at mass production. But that's, but that's specific to that roaster. The process, and you're talking about like 12 people coming in, I, I would see that the labor's not a thing here, right? I mean, what would those 12 people be doing? I mean, it's one person roasting. If you had five people, they would be standing there and there wouldn't be a function to their job. There isn't anything to lift, there isn't anything to move, there's nothing to do but to work on, you know, turning a knob and adjusting the coffee. So the scale of occupancy or the scale of driveway, I can't see that going unless, unless there was some sort of event or something like that that was occurring, which would be a temporary event or something like that. So I, I would think that the biggest thing would probably be, you know, what happens if, if the, if I, if the roaster broke and I had to get a new roaster? And if the roaster, if it needed to be bigger, right, or had to be bigger? And that's where I believe it would go to a different place. Because I need to be respectful of the landlord and this isn't expected to be a mass production facility. And once you, once you buy into that, then you're, you're buying a lot of, of cost. And then it probably makes sense to go somewhere else to be able to do that. But also, as you said, David, the Fork Food Lab hopefully will be having these types of things, if not Fork Food, other places, in which case it would make it a lot easier for me to be able to...
As long as the new roaster is electric.
Yes, well, they do do them electric as well. They're just, the challenge with them is efficiency, right? The propane's actually much more efficient.
Okay, I think we'll discuss this more probably when we get to, to our, our findings. But any other questions right now? With that in mind, we'll, I propose moving to the performance standards, so we can run through those. So the, thank you for filling this out. I will say too, thank you for the level of detail on this. We've had a number of special exception approvals of, over the last year or so and not all have been as, as thoughtfully complete in their applications. So I thank you for, for working with the planning staff to do that. So the first performance standard is that the occupation of a profession shall be carried on or wholly within the principal building or within a building accessories there, there too. And I believe the evidence you've shown demonstrates that. There's no other buildings that, there's a hidden roaster that's lurking that we haven't seen yet. Right, got it. The home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to use of the dwelling. It is, this is your primary residential dwelling. You're using it as your primary dwelling, not as an Airbnb with a roaster attached? Got it, great. No more than one person who is not a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in the home occupation. You've spoken to this already. Exterior signage shall be permitted in accordance with the home occupation sign provisions.
Yeah, there's no signage now. I would, I would like to be able to have a temporary sign, but that's with respect to whatever regulations you would, you would stipulate. I, I think since, my understanding, being in the neighborhood, is it wouldn't be appropriate to have a permanent sign. I have, when I go to the coffee, when I go to the farmer's market, I have a banner. I could temporarily put up a banner if that was okay to do, but it's not required.
We can definitely, you know, work, work with the signage ordinance to find something that works for you.
Thank you.
I don't want to go into detail on it right now, but certainly if you, if you have the desire to have a sign, there are regulations in place that would allow you to do that, whether it's temporary or permanent. We can discuss that later.
Great, thank you.
And, and obviously, it would be a lot up to your, your landlord as far as what your lease agreement allowed you to have. So you might want to make sure that that's part of your consideration when you're revising the leash, the lease.
Moving on, no nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily limited to offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat or glare. We've talked about this a little, so...
Is that number six?
Number six, yes.
Oh, we scrolled up then.
We skipped five.
No, that's the exterior, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. That's different than the signage, okay. There shall be no exterior display, storage of materials and no other exterior indication of the home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal building.
Right, nothing stored outside the building.
And you and the, and your landlord have both noted that the modifications to the garage door were done to make sure that they were as effectively invisible as possible.
The garage door was not modified at all.
Yeah, it just added those two plywood.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. And they don't have murals or, or lots of, yeah, got it.
Same light.
Perfect. Okay, now, no nuisance shall be generated, including but not limited, but not, including but not necessarily limited to offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat or glare.
Okay, yep, so it's quiet and no nuisance will be generated?
The traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the, of the immediate neighborhood.
Yep, so this, you would be difficult to know it's even operating? And there isn't any function for having traffic come and go?
Okay. In addition to the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirements of the dwelling, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of each employee, which you've said there are none. And the vehicles of the maximum number of users or customers the home occupation may attract during peak operating hours. And you've...
Yep, that's just one operator. If necessary, there's room for someone to pull in if they have to.
And the home occupation may utilize not more than 20% of the dwelling unit floor area, may utilize unfinished attic and basement spaces and space with an accessory dwelling building, accessory building, excuse me, totally not more than 1,000 square feet of area.
Yep, so you have the photos and I think I provided a diagram too, so you can kind of see where that's, how that's set up. So the garage is on the bottom left-hand corner and that's the roaster setup. I have my office there, so I have a desk there and a computer there as well. So that's pretty much how things are arranged.
This would be a technical one for you, Brian. As a garage, that would not be included within dwelling unit space, right?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Perfect. Home occupations may include retail sales following limitations. Total area is limited to 400 square feet. The sale of products is limited to products produced or assembled on premises with some other stipulations. But you said that there are no retail sales of the location, correct?
Yeah, I, by that, there, someone could pick up their order. So they're, they're making their order ahead of time and they're coming to pick it up.
Okay. Okay, those are the performance standards listed in their entirety. With that, I think we can thank you for your presentation, Mark.
Thank you.
There were no public comments attached, no phone calls, no, nothing? Brian?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. With that, I will, without objection from other members of the board, bring the public section, section of this appeal to a close. And we can begin our discussion. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I, excuse me. You're the landlord, but you're also a member of the public.
I am a member of the public.
I apologize, Mr. Garrett, I apologize.
And I, I am in a butter. I live directly behind 238 Blackpoint Road. And in the year and a half, one of the points was to, to odors and smells and pork loins and, and whatever else. In the year and a half he's been doing this, I can unequivocally say I can count on one hand how many times I've smelled him roasting coffee. And it's generally like, who is cooking breakfast at 2:00 in the afternoon? Oh, it's Mark, okay. I hear him playing a saxophone more than I do smell coffee from that. So as far as noxious odors, anything like that, wood stoves in the wintertime are significantly more offensive than whatever he's doing. Part of the stipulation when he came to me to begin with, don't cause any traffic problems. Blackpoint Road is extremely busy. You know, don't cause any public safety issues. And yard sales up and down Blackpoint Road are more of a hazard than any traffic I've seen coming in and out of 238 Blackpoint Road. Oh, there was something else I wanted to touch on. Yes, coincidentally, I was involved in installing a industrial, commercial-sized coffee roaster in town Portland. It was like 8,000 pounds on Commercial Street. And we shoved it through the front of the building with a front-end loader. I'm dead serious. It was huge. It was the size of a car. And that was a whole fiasco. So when he kind of came to me with this, I, my initial thought was absolutely not, I've seen this before. And then he shows me his roaster that's the size of a, of a, you know, home office printer. And I was kind of like, okay, that's it? He goes, yeah, I'm going to do probably a couple of pounds, two, three, four pounds a week at most. All right, like that's, that is not even close to what I thought it was going to be. And it's, and it's a, it's a specialty item and it's, you know, very small batches and, and it's completely non-intrusive. That was the agreement we had to begin with. And honestly, if I didn't drive by three or four times a day, every so often I see the plywood in the garage door, I'd never even know he was over there doing it, never even know. And clearly, the other members of the neighborhood don't have a concern with what he's doing either, so.
And this is not necessarily your, you clearly had a good relationship with him in the 18 months that he's been going through this. This has worked out as you would have hoped. You've not needed to raise any concerns or anything like that?
If he has to either move his operation or close his operation or he has to leave because he scales to a point that he outgrows the garage, I'm going to lose a great neighbor and the best tenant that I've ever had for the, well, let's see, I started with an investment property in 2008. So in the last 16 years, I don't hear a peep from him. Takes care of the property. Anytime I've had to go in for a maintenance issue or whatever, it's neat as a pin. And again, it's just, he's the best tenant I've ever had. So if, if, if he has to move because he can't continue this operation or he scales to a point that he needs to get into a bigger space and doesn't want to continue living on Blackpoint Road, then I stand to lose, you know, a, a good neighbor and a good tenant. And I have nothing to gain from this operation.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely nothing to gain from it, so.
Thanks very much. And sorry to have run over you when we closed the public conversation. This is very helpful. Thank you very much.
Oh, that's safe, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll close the public comment. And we'll go into general discussion first and then we can run through findings of fact. Any general topics that we want to say ahead of time?
I think the criteria are met. That's my general takeaway.
We'll go through the criteria, obviously, but...
Yeah, the only issue for me was the, as I addressed right away, was standing. All right, this miscellaneous appeal, all miscellaneous appeals are probably the easiest appeals that we ever face.
This isn't a miscellaneous appeal.
Excuse me, what is it?
Special exception.
Special exception, okay.
But yeah, special exception for, for home businesses, okay? I mean, we face a lot of them.
Yep.
They're easy, they are, in general.
They should be easy.
Well, yeah, so, okay, so...
And then we have the folks selling shellfish, but...
Yeah, and these sort of come up when, you know, things that are already happening are discovered and that's fine. You know, so we do our thing. So that's the only comment I really want to make, is that I think that, you know, all the standards and so forth have been met very nicely. Mark has provided all kinds of backup material to be able to explain what he's doing. And I feel comfortable going forward with this.
I, I'd propose just, I'm going to the findings. I think that's where we'll, we'll get to some of the meat of this. Again, I'd like to thank the applicant for putting together a complete package. Thank the board for raising the standing issues early on. And, and thank the landlord too. My big concern on this one, coming into it, was odor. But my vision of coffee roasting was a small car on Commercial Street inside of a building or whatever, pumping out steam, it doesn't smell like steam, it smells like a fire with some coffee behind it. What has been clear here, and it's been helpful to hear from the landlord, who would have the most issue, not always the landlord does in a butter, but to scale that issue in my mind, it's like, okay, that, this is, this is not the droid I was looking for. So I appreciate that. But with that, let's go through the findings of fact. And, uh, do I have, yes, I do. The first one is, we'll go through the findings first and then we'll go through the, the performance criteria. The proposed use will not create unsanitary, unhealthful conditions by, by raising sewage disposal, emissions to the air, water or other aspects of design or operation. We'll do this as we normally do. David, you start and then...
Okay. So the board finds that the roasting equipment is designed to adequately capture the particular emissions that would otherwise become airborne. And there is no other unhealthy or sanitary condition created in the operation.
Any thoughts? Are we broadly in agreement with that? Okay, a quick show of hands, all who are in favor? That's five to nothing. We are good for A. B, Richard?
The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity. The applicant has just explained that there are no employees, so there will be no employee traffic. There will rarely be occasional pickups by people who have ordered online. I can't see that creating any kind of unsafe traffic conditions on Blackpoint Road. So I think the criteria has been met.
Any discussion, any thoughts? Nope. Show of hands in agreement with that? Unanimous? We vote yes. The C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or requires a substantially different degree of fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. The, I think we could find and agree with the statements by the appellant that the roasting equipment limits roasting temperatures. And that there's unlikely that there will be any greater need for fire or police protection here. So I think this has been substantially met. Any thoughts?
Can I ask one question of the landlord?
Sure.
Do you know whether or not your insurance coverage will go up as a result of this operation? Have you talked to the insurance company? Is it all about it?
I have talked to my insurance company about this, not specifically where it is a rental property and where a lot of people are working for home, home occupations. I believe, I do believe it does cover that. Now, I don't know whether it covers it specifically. However, you know, you have a thousand different specific things in general areas of all...
May I, please? Mark, Mark has provided a copy of this business insurance policy, okay? Which is totally separate from everything else and that covers it.
Okay, any other questions, thoughts, concerns? I believe this has been met. If I can see a show of hands for yes, that's unanimous. Kyle, if you would cover D?
The proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies. I think we should make a finding that because no water is used, there will be no effect on water supplies and because the proposed use will have no effect on the footprint of the building or any other moving of earth that could result in sedimentation or erosion, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion.
I concur. Any thoughts or comments from other board members? None? If I see a show of hands agreeing with that finding? Kyle?
Oh, yes, I agree with my proposed finding.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. That is unanimous. Joe, if you would do E?
Sure. The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures and density of development. It's a small home occupation, very small, as we saw from the diagram, very small portion of the garage will be used for the production. Certainly, the venting solution that the gentleman had come up with is very discreet. You wouldn't even know it. I drive by this place all the time. I wouldn't have even known it was there. So certainly, it, it's not out of character and it's, it's, it, you know, nobody's going to know it's there for all intents and purposes. So I think this standard has been met.
Any other comments on that one? Seeing none, a show of hands to agree with that finding? Unanimously in favor. That is unanimously in favor. I'll cover F, which is the minimalist one. The proposed use will not take place in Shoreland Zone, but we've had attestation to that fact by the CEO. All in favor of that finding? That's unanimous. Richard, I'd like to take G, because I think this is the one where we might have some conversation.
The applicant has sufficient right, title, or interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use.
This is the issue that we had talked about at the beginning. I think with the representation by the landlord that the lease will be amended, and a copy of that lease, the amendments to the lease provided to us to enter into the record, I think that we can find that the applicant does have sufficient right, title, and interest to operate. I think it really is important that we have as part of the record, the amended, or the new lease, which allows for this activity to take place. Without that, I think the permit would have to be viewed as invalid, and so I think we, you have to make sure that we have that in the record.
That lease would be effective in three weeks at the end of the month. So I can add a line item in there, or change the one that excludes home occupation, et cetera, et cetera, when we, you know, give the lease executed.
Okay, good, and I think that's probably the only thing that has to change. I don't know whether, David, you found anything else? I didn't see anything else in the lease, other than that.
That lease is propagated off of, generally speaking, a, an apartment-style lease, not necessarily a single-family home. We did change some verbiage in there where I could wear, decide the landlord can't enter the property. I had that changed to the dwelling, so I can still mow the lawn without giving them 24-hour notices, and block the driveway without 24-hour notice, and so there have been some things that were adjusted. That wasn't one, and he came in the middle of the coat, so everybody's working from home. How do you exclude that? That excludes your entire tenant base, if you can't work from home.
You can plow my driveway anytime you want with that 24-hour notice, so that's, don't hesitate. But no, I think that's, I mean, that's right, but this is a different kind of home occupation. You know, it's one thing to take your emails at night when you're operating in office and communicating, but you were actually physically doing something on the property, and I think that's why the exception is necessary.
And one thing I'd appreciated that is that part of the allowance of the home occupation is without disruption to neighboring tenants or butters, because I think we will end up relying on you as the landlord, but also as the butter, in case he starts pumping out a lot more odor.
Can you just say that one more time? It's without the impact of the.
Without adverse impact to neighbors or butters. So to your point, home occupations are everywhere. We see every now and again the home occupations which do bake bread, which do things like this, which could annoy a neighbor at some point, and having a landlord there as somebody who can help the CEO enforce that butters are not being discomforted by what's going on, that's appreciated. Having you as the butter and the landlord is just icing on the cake.
Sitting next to your landlord ain't for everybody.
Exactly.
And, which, again, it just speaks to Mark's character, and, I mean, that's the reason he's here, came in for a permit, and they said, well, wait a minute, where are you doing this? And so the reason we're sitting here is the fact that he was in here trying to do the right thing, and not because he was sneaking around trying to get away with something.
Appreciate that, so, thanks. So, yeah, so, sorry.
One thing to add, yes, the testimony of the landlord also stated that best tenant ever, and I can also add to it, that when I talked to Corinne, the executive director, well, deputy executive director of Fork Food Lab this morning, she said that Mark is definitely a member of good standing, so that adds to the financial part.
That'll be the next one. Right now, we're just doing it with valid lease, so, but we'll get you that on the next one, though, because you're gonna cover the next one, actually. But I think for item G, we've added a requirement that we see the updated lease language, but otherwise, with that added to it, we find that this has been met. So could I see a show of hands if, that's unanimous, terrific? And now, we'll talk about the technical and financial ability, which I believe you may have some knowledge of.
Just my previous comment. Thank you.
Any other comments on that one? I think the.
See you all.
Yeah. Any other comments? Terrific. We find that the applicant has demonstrated the adequate technical and financial capability necessary. A show of hands, please? That's unanimous. And the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of occupation. We've heard a description of what the hours are, or are and may likely grow to become, all of which are well within minimal, minimal limits for the R2 district and on, and Black Point Road. So I think we can find the equipment used is adequately quiet, and that the use is compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood. Without any comment? All in favor? That is unanimous. So we have voted on that one. I'm going to first go through the home occupations, and then I'll vote on the appeal as a whole. Is that right?
Mr. Chair, if I could suggest that you could vote on the home occupation standards as a whole, instead of going one by one?
That's exactly what I was gonna plan to do, yes. I have a good record on keeping these meetings relatively short, so.
I didn't say that you didn't.
Thank you very much. But with that, before we take a vote on the approval itself, we've gone through and had a chance to query on the, on the performance standards. I don't think anything came up on this that we had any concerns with in discussion, but I'll open it up for general comment. Seeing none, we believe, we find that the performance standards have been met. Can I have a vote up or down? Agree the performance standards have been met? And on that basis, can I have a roll call for an approval of special exception permit number 2762 for Mark Peterson at 238 Black Point Road? Doreen?
David Boer.
Yes.
Richard Silkman.
Yes.
Peter Freylinger.
Yes.
Carol Moonen.
Yes.
And Joe Doran.
Yes. The motion is approved, and thank you very much for your patience, your permit is approved. And we'll look forward to getting that additional lease information, and then you can work with the department and move forward. Thank you for your patience.
I think I have Brian's email.
Okay, that's the only item on the agenda tonight. So any comments from the board? Good? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Secuted?
Second.
Approved? All in favor, approved. The zoning board is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience for that discussion. Thank you.